I'm sure all the kids are excited, and I say that a little bit jokingly because school's coming, but I know some of them are. And I think a lot of the parents are ready to get back into the routine of things. So obviously we won't be public until after they start, so good luck to all the students and parents, and I'm one of them. It feels good for them to start again.
Rob?
No comments.
Dash?
Just want to say hello and that it feels like school's started. Our student athletes are already out there playing, so please keep a lookout for them and be ready to support the school. Thank you.
Pete?
I don't have anything except to say to thank you to our staff members who worked hard over the summer to get the school ready for the opening. So thank you to them, and that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Pete. I was going to say the same exact thing. There's been a lot going on in the schools over the summer, a lot of work to prepare for next week's opening. So for all those efforts, we thank those who have been working on that diligently over the summer. And also just a welcome next week. You know, it is all, it's, what do they say? The best of times and the worst of times. Good to send them back and sad at the same time when summer comes to an end. But for all to enjoy the last, the last days of summer and looking forward to an exciting school year ahead. Carl?
Good evening. First, I just want to point out that the summer is a busy time for us. And at our September board meeting, we will give it, be given a more formal update to the community. But just to point out a couple of things that have occurred over the course of the summer. We had our, our summer board retreat. That was very productive time. I thank the board for, for giving the hours in addition to doing several meetings over the course of the summer that were time-sensitive items. We also had a two-day administrators retreat, and we welcomed three new administrators, our director of special education. We have a new elementary principal and a new middle school principal. That retreat went very well. We covered topics from APPR, which is our evaluation observation system. The administrative staff was trained. We were updated on, on new important legal topics in education. We also discussed safety and security in our schools. We discussed goals for, for the school year. We also discussed public relations. We were working with a public relations team and plan to do a lot more in the way of communication and information to our community, sharing some of the great stuff that's happening here in Tucker. In addition, there's been an awful lot of work happening. I think a few of our board members indicated this. And Ms. Lou is going to talk more about the physical work that has been done in, in our building. She'll give you an overview now and a more detailed update in September. But I just need to personally thank the staff from, from our custodial staff, under Lee's leadership, with our consultant, Anthony Russo, helping to coordinate some of these summer projects. And we also had 12 high school students who have worked with us, and we actually extended them. They were so productive and so hardworking. And I really think we could not have done it without the, the high school students, and I'm just very impressed. We also had summer programs for all those teachers who were willing to come in and give their summertime to either work with our students and teach, running the, the middle school summer scholars program. And other teachers worked on curriculum projects under Dr. McDonald's leadership. And all of that stuff will be discussed and shared in more detail as, as, as we open the school year in September. But again, thank you to all the people that have worked hard behind the scenes. And we are going down to the wire. We will be working right through Labor Day, but school will be ready for our students. And we look forward to seeing them next week on September 6th.
Thank you, Carl. Lee?
Hi, good evening. I want to also express my extreme gratitude to our custodial staff and our custodial helpers who worked very, very hard this summer around construction, around summer camps, to clean our buildings, to get them ready and renovated for September. We also undertook several projects over the summer to renovate our schools. We completely removed floors and renovated four classrooms at Cottle. We painted five rooms at Cottle. We installed nine air conditioners at Cottle. We upgraded the security and upper entrance doors at Cottle so that we could have a more secure secondary entrance that we might, will be using this fall. At the middle school, high school, we painted and replaced the carpeting in the library as well as the classrooms on the second level of the library. We painted two classrooms. We subdivided offices so that we could fit more people more efficiently in the central office area. We also created a strings classroom out of unused file room space and office space so that we would have another classroom available for our strings program. And we are continuing to finish up those projects right through Labor Day weekend. And we will be continuing to do more renovations, painting, air conditioning installations throughout the school year. We also have received delivery on classroom furniture for grades two, three, and four. They'll be receiving all new chairs. Some of the classrooms, two of the classrooms are also piloting new desks and new configurations and styles of student desks. And we have plans to continue to purchase furniture throughout the year as teachers review what we have in place and decide what will make the most sense educationally for their classrooms. So we look forward to improving the schools on the inside. We're also working on the outside of the buildings. We've done some landscaping work over the summer. We've repaired our driveway so that we will avoid having cars go through potholes. Everything's been repaired. We've been taking a look at doing some maintenance work that will keep us in check until we start our bigger project next summer.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, comments by the PTA. Tara?
For those of you who don't know me yet, you will soon, I'm the new PTA president, Tara Zeggers. And those in the community, I'm really looking forward to an exciting couple of years collaborating with the board and all of our teachers and administrators here in Tucker. A couple of things you will, the community will have seen in a lot of their back-to-school packets, membership information for PTA. It is not too soon to get started with that. If you are already on Schoolbee, which is our communications for, for PTA, you can still go in there and use that link, but there's paper forms as well. Get started with that. All of the money that goes to your memberships for PTA goes directly to our children and the programs that we do for them as well as for our teachers to benefit our children. We and the executive board have already started to work this summer to get some things on the calendar and move things along quickly, and I think it's going to be a really exciting year. Two things to highlight from PTA, our kindergarten bus run is coming up on Wednesday, August 29th, which is just two days from now, starting at 8:00 AM at Cottle. PTA will be there to help facilitate that with our welcoming committee. And it's really exciting to see all those little guys start to come into the Tucker schools. And there is also going to be a welcome picnic for the kindergarteners that will be happening on September 8th. That will be done in the playground over by Cottle. In the event of rain, it gets moved to the cafeteria. I believe it starts at 11 o'clock on September 8th, which is a Saturday. It's a picnic. Families can come and bring something to eat and meet their classmates and families who are in kindergarten. And there's also going to be a magician there to keep the little ones entertained. So, thank you all, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And congratulations to you and your new role, and thank you for your service, because I know you're taking on an awful lot, and we thank you for that.
You know what? I didn't know if we wanted to mention, because there's also orientations coming up for those kids who might have forgotten. Just to make a mention.
Should we have the, the time?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I think Tuesday is sixth grade. Wednesday is seventh. Am I saying that right? Tomorrow's sixth?
Let me see if I can find.
Okay, we'll pull it up.
I know that Thursday is seventh.
Lauren, do you mind just checking the middle school website?
I just want to put that out there in case parents. It's on the website. Yeah. Just a reminder, especially for those sixth graders, because I know they love to come and see their lockers.
So what Cynthia is referring to is some middle school tradition, and I enjoyed this every year for nine years. And this is when our students are able to come in over the summer, get themselves organized. Some of our sixth graders in particular, it's the first time they're moving class to class, which, which could present a bit of a challenge. Getting comfortable with those combination locks also, believe it or not, is, is a little intimidating your first few days of school. By week two, they have it down. But it really helps them to be comfortable in their transition, particularly grade six. Lauren, were you able to find the?
Sixth grade is Tuesday, and seventh and eighth grade is on Thursday.
Great. And they'll have an opportunity to meet our, our new middle school principal, Greg Stiefel, who is settling in this week, and he'll be there to greet the students.
Thank you. Okay, and now is the first recognition of the audience. If there's anything on the agenda, items that you would like to discuss. No. Okay. So then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Pete, second. Rob, discussion. Is there anything on there?
A couple of things that I just wanted to, maybe if we could just have a, a quick summary. Number seven is a grant. Lee, maybe you could just give us a little background as to this local government records management improvement fund grant that we're receiving from the state. And exactly, I know, you know, I think the, the reason why I bring it up is there's a sensitivity, obviously, to personal private information. And here, we're going to digitize school records. So I'm sure, you know, the district and the parents would like to know how is that data protected and kept private? And have we performed the background check to see how the data is stored and maintained?
So this grant is a grant that was provided by New York State to do records management for districts. And through the work with the district and Orange Ulster BOCs located a little bit upstate New York, one of the BOCs in New York State, they worked with us to write a grant, and we received a sixty, just about $60,000 grant to go through our student records, purge information that's no longer needed to be stored based on state archive requirements, and digitize the remaining records so that they can be accessed by the district on an easy basis and take them out of, the way we store them now in hard copy. Orange Ulster BOCs, I'm reading from their materials here, are adhere to the New York State Archives guidelines for purging, microphoning, and digitizing records, and meet regularly with the New York State Archive officers to remain compliant. However, I wasn't able to reach them today to get the exact protocols that they use. So what I would recommend is, I would like to have them either present to us or at least send to us their protocols before we go forward with this project. They've done it for many districts around the state as well as their own component school districts in Orange Ulster. But I completely understand that we should at least have an airing of how they maintain their records before we go forward with the project. So I will, in the very near future, have them either come in or provide all that information to you before we move forward.
Yeah, that would be great if we could maybe make a note to follow up on what the protocol is in regards to the storage of data and how they protect it.
And if I could add, you know, Ms. Lou needs to be complimented for taking the initiative in pursuing this grant. So again, it is a sixty, or nearly $60,000 in grant money. The district does not have to pay for it. It couldn't come at a better time because we are facing a, a major capital project, which will start, the, the heavy construction will start next summer. And, and we're a small district, and we do not have all that much storage space. And there is so much archived information that some of it, as, as Ms. Lou indicated, based on the New York State requirements, some of it is no longer required and can be destroyed and, and, you know, safely through this, this process. And then the rest of it can be digitized, which certainly will help us reclaim space that, that really will be valuable as we, we embark on the capital project. So Ms. Lou, thank you for your initiative with this.
Lee, is the $60,000, is most of that for salary or for, for the labor that goes into that, or is it infrastructure money?
Most of it is the labor. It takes a significant amount of time for them to go through the records and then scan them and then store them. I have a breakout for you. I can provide that as well the next time we discuss it in more depth.
So can I just, so this, this resolution, though, is to accept the funds and also to expend the funds to, to then grant that BOCs will be doing the work, correct? In one resolution? Because sometimes I know with grants, you're just accepting the, the funds, and then later on, when we're ready to spend the money, we would then have to approve it again.
Right. But if they don't come in to do any work, obviously, we would, if you want to table the resolution, we can do that.
Well, that's what I'm just asking you, because if it was just to accept it, then, then I would say let's go forward. But if we're also at the same time approving it to be, approving it to be done, and we haven't, and we don't have that information, then maybe we should just table it.
That may make more sense, so we can do it when I have the information.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Okay, okay.
Because I think Rob brought up a good point. I would like to know more about how it's going to be done.
Okay. So from the consent agenda, there's a motion to table number seven. Is there a motion to table? Cynthia, second. Rob, all in favor? Okay. Is that the way to do that? Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else?
One other question, maybe, and Carl, maybe you want to comment on it. I noticed that we have the two-year plan for special education. I think that's a significant document. It's 140 pages. I think that's something where maybe if we could just make the audience aware of where that document can be found so they can get access to it and review it.
Good point, Rob. And the perfect person to give you that information is Mr. Joseph Spatola. I invited him to speak to this. Joe, thank you.
Thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure to come onboard here. The last two months have flown by. Everybody's been wonderful, staff, students, parents. I've got the opportunity to meet so many parents and children, so I think this is such an important piece. The special two-year plan is mandated by New York State. It's really, it lays out our policies and procedures internally to make sure that we're identifying students, properly servicing students, and applying due process rights for all of our students. So it's basically just lays out what's in place and what are the processes there. We're not, any significant changes in the plan from two years ago will be posted on our website tomorrow morning after it's approved here, the updated version. We can get that up pretty quickly. You know, the biggest changes have been incorporating another level of administration and myself. So some of the directions have changed. Who do you ask for? Who do you, who do you appeal to those types of questions? The continuum of services obviously changes every year depending on the needs of our students and that. It means this year's plan is updated with this year's continuum, continuum of services. We can talk about whether it's appropriate to amend it next year with the 1920 continuum of services as well, but that's something to discuss at a later time. It also includes updated statistical data about our outcomes, our students, our classification rate, the types of classifications that students are in.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and welcome again, and, and we wish you the very best this year. Thank you. Okay, so anything else on the consent agenda?
No.
Motion to approve the consent agenda two through 12.
Okay. Okay, so then motion, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, items two through 12. Pete, second. Rob. Okay, all in favor? Okay, move forward to business of the board. One is to adopt a policy. This policy's been on the agenda our last couple of meetings. This is state mandated changes to our policies for, I believe, what we charge for our meals and, and to make sure that no students are denied. Is that correctly? Was there anything else in there?
And also that no student would be singled out for not having funds available for lunch to make sure that every student gets a meal and is not embarrassed by the process. So we have strict guidelines from the state of how to correct and implement those guidelines.
For the language, right? Okay. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, all in favor? Number two is a first reading of a policy, and this is policy number 4772, graduation ceremonies. Lauren, is this also state mandated change in our policy for graduation ceremonies?
It's a mandated policy, and we do not currently have it.
So we have, no? Oh, so, okay.
And, and let me just add to that, you know, this, this has been our practice. So Tucker will be doing nothing differently, but this just formalizes that all students, even if you, no matter what type of diploma you are graduating with, are, are welcome at graduation and recognized at our school's graduation, which has been our practice for many, many years.
Okay. So we're not going to, we're going to have, we're just putting it up now if there's any questions, and it's going to be on our website, Lauren, so that people can review the language of the policy, correct? Okay? And if anyone has any questions or remarks or comments, to please let us know. And it will be on our agenda for our next meeting, and then the following meeting after that, we will put it up for a vote. If there's any changes, we'll address them as we go along. Okay, number three is to approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with the Writing Revolution Professional Development Services for the period of September 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, at a compensation of $19,080. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Normally, Dr. McDonald would speak to this, but I, I think the board is familiar with the Writing Revolution. We are going into our third full year with this program. We've seen wonderful results. Dr. Judith Hockman is, is, is at the helm of this company, and it is a K-12 writing initiative across all grade levels and all subject areas. At this point, we are more or less in the maintenance stages, so the initial training has occurred. But of course, new, new teachers come onboard every year. We've also built internal capacity later on the agenda. You'll be approving teachers who we are investing in and sending to the Writing Revolution to train and be teacher leaders. So this initiative is being reinforced and, and promoted going forward.
So then, Carl, essentially, if what I'm hearing is that eventually they'll kind of be weaned off once some of our teachers become like teacher leaders?
Well, we already, Cynthia, we already have teacher leaders in place. It started last year. So there, there probably would be continued training for them. There's also support with, with the consultants. It's just been, been reduced. You know, the, the first two years, it was probably quadrupled the amount of support. So it's been reduced significantly, but, but I, you know, at this point, I, and Dr. McDonald would, would probably have a better idea of the future, but I, I don't see us ever completely cutting ties with them. For example, I mean, this year, we, we focused on literacy and mathematics. So, so, you know, we'll, we'll be looking at different subject areas. There's literacy in every subject area, and the Writing Revolution people seem to really stay on the cutting edge, and there's always new materials and, and new, new methods. So I, I think it's something we want to continue and sustain into the future.
That's good to hear.
All in favor? Number four, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Andrea Russo Urquide for feeding therapy services for the period of June 11th, 2018, through June 30th, 2018, at a rate of $170 per hour, up to a maximum of $10,000. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Dash, discussion?
This was for the past couple of months ago?
This, this occurred, this was mandated as per an IEP. Rob, Ellen is not here to speak to it, but, but this was probably something that was mandated as per the student's IEP.
Okay. I, I just don't know, I don't know. I guess it's appropriate time. I'd like to kind of make a recommendation at this time. I, over the summer, did a lot of research on looking at other boards and how they prepare their agendas. And I was thinking that maybe, because if we look, items four through maybe 10 or 11 here, our, our special education services, I don't remember a time ever that the board opposed to any service that one of our students needs, especially if they're, they're IEP. So maybe we can condense all of those into one agenda item and, of course, have the attachment, Lauren, for all, you know, of, of the recommendations there. And of course, the board has access to that information ahead of time if they have any questions, any specifics. Now that Joe is with us, if there's something specific or he would like to point out to us at a meeting, that something stands out, maybe there's something that you'd like to talk to us about, that it's, it's something new and/or a different way of approaching something, we would love to hear it. But I think some of these things are kind of standard recommendations that we do every year, and none of us have an objection to. I think it would be just more efficient if we could just put that in one item and, and hold a vote on that. Unless, you know, there might be a reason that you might have, okay. Carl, is there, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think it's a great recommendation.
Lauren, is that okay with you?
Lauren, we'll, we'll block both of them.
Okay. Great. That's good with me, too.
Be more efficient.
Okay, so on number four, all in favor? Number five, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Eileen Yip for full, well, let's see, FTSW counseling, so I'm not sure, full-time social work counseling services for the 2018-19 school year at a rate of $100 per hour, not to exceed $10,000. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, I'm sorry.
I know, it's hard to see.
All in favor? We don't normally sit like this, so the last couple of meetings have been a struggle, but we're, we're going to get through it. Okay. Number six, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Bridge to Success LLC at a rate of $250 an hour for psychological and educational assessments for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, not to exceed $10,000. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number seven, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement, consultant service agreement between Civic Solutions Group LLC and the Tucker Union Free School District for billing Medicaid eligible services for a fee based on 20% of the federal Medicaid revenues that the district is entitled to retain based on approved claims for services provided to special education classified students beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, not to exceed $2,000. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? Lee, just out of curiosity, in the past, is there, like, what, what have we received back on, on something like that?
It varies from year to year. It's, they work with us to go through and work with the special education department to get the paperwork that's required to submit. So it varies from about $10,000 to $15,000 a year, and they, they get a percentage of the fees.
Okay. All right, very good.
I mean, the reimbursements.
Okay. All in favor? Number eight, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve the consultant service agreement between, did we just do that? Yes, we did. I'm sorry. We just approved. Oh, okay. Resolve to approve the consultant service agreement between Civic Solutions Group LLC and the Tucker Union Free School District for billing Medicaid eligible services for a fee based on 20% of federal Medicaid revenues that the district is entitled to retain based on approved claims for services provided to special education classified students beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, not to exceed $2,000. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dash, discussion? So the fir, so the last resolution was for last year, correct? And this one is for this year? Okay, very good. All in favor? Number nine, resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Carbone Clinic for outreach consultation services for the 2018-19 school year at a rate of $1,500 per day, not to exceed $31,500. Is there a motion? Dash, second. Pete, discussion?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that with, like, have we reached out to them before and what kind of services they provide?
Yes, I'll begin, and then I'll, I'll look towards Joseph, who I think is already familiar with, with this consultant. So the Carbone Clinic. So, the Carbone Clinic is nationally recognized for providing support and working to train teachers and staff members to work with children with autism. The Carbone Clinic has been with us now, this would be the third year, that they're working directly with our staff and providing training and support. And we've had tremendous, tremendous success as a result of their work with us. Joseph, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure.
Yeah, please, please come up to the mic.
Just to speak directly to the agreement itself for this year, it's contracted, they'll be working in each of our ABA classrooms in the elementary school once a month to consult with those teachers, develop plans for individual students and for the classroom as a whole. John Marash and I have already met with Gina, the clinical coordinator at Carbone, to get an idea of what they were gonna do and what they can bring to the table for us. We really want to look at that this year to use it as efficiently as possible. And we have a little bit of time built in because as we have students who are now moving from that ABA classroom to more typical settings, we may need some behavioral consultation in there as well. So, that's built into the agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
All in favor? Number 11, approve an agreement.
Number 10.
I'm sorry. Number 10.
She's going to move to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Never, right, the one, the one, the one, okay. Proven agreement, resolve to approve an agreement with Westchester Institute for Human Development for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 for assistive technology training at $225 per hour or $560 for three consecutive hours, or for assistive technology evaluations at $1,380 for one discipline, or $1,890 for two disciplines plus travel fees. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Can I get a little more clarification on that? Is this something for staff or is this for students? Because I assume it's for staff.
Yes. Service.
So, we've been using Westchester Institute for Human Development for our assistive technology evaluation. So, that's for individual special education students who are having difficulty, whether it's understanding what's being taught or producing what has to be produced. So, there's a variety of different tools. The training could actually be for either staff or students. Some of the software requires the staff to know how to operate it so that they can get the materials to the students in a way that can be read by the software or interpreted by the software.
Very good. So, when you refer to a discipline, what does that mean? One discipline, two disciplines?
That's the way they word it. If you had a very significantly impaired student, you might be talking about a speech-language, augmented communication, and an assistive technology evaluation. So, they're doing multiple typically for us, it's one discipline in assistive technology.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Now, number 11, approve an agreement. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves and ratifies the agreement with Judith A. Wilson LLC dated August 24th, 2018, through which Judith A. Wilson LLC will facilitate the development of a strategic plan for the school district during the 2018-19 school year, which services will include an assessment of the school district's strengths and needs and the development of goals and an action plan for the school district for a sum not to exceed $24,000 for fees and expenses. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education is hereby authorized and empowered to execute the agreement with Judith A. Wilson LLC. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and School District Officers and Administrators are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of and to cause compliance with the agreement. Motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion?
I will just give a little background on this for our board and particularly the community. So, I think, you know, anyone that has been following Tuckahoe's story will recall that we just completed a five-year strategic plan in June of 2018. And that plan, you know, began back in 2012 with the needs assessment with our community. Three years in, we did a revision to a lot of those strategic plan-specific goals. We created an addendum, which was more current, and that really got us through the last two years and helped us remain focused on some very important goals for the district. We were planning to do a needs assessment in the spring, but as the board will recall, with an April bond vote, we were engaging the community quite a bit. And we thought it would be a bit too much to have people come in and participate in a needs assessment through focus group meetings, through surveys, again, because we were engaging them so much in the bond referendum and then right after that, the spring budget vote. So, we thought the fall would be the appropriate time after school settles in to start with a needs assessment and based on the results of that needs assessment to develop a new strategic plan. We have no commitment to three years versus five years. Typically, districts go between three and five. I think that's something that we will discuss as a board and get, you know, with feedback from the consultant. Now, quick background on Judy Wilson. She's a very sought-after consultant for this purpose. This is her area of expertise. She was the former superintendent of the Princeton School District in New Jersey. She is very, very well-respected and accomplished educator. Since her retirement from that position, she has been doing strategic planning and needs assessments for many, many districts in the tri-state area, just to name a few. One of the references was West Windsor Plainsboro Public Schools in New Jersey, one of the five top-performing school districts in the state of New Jersey. She's done needs assessment, strategic planning for the Edgemont School District, for districts closer to us. Also, she did work in the Pelham School District. The board has had access to some of those other plans and we've reviewed them. We are very impressed with her work and we think she's going to be a great fit for Tuckahoe. She'll begin in October and this process will take place beginning in October and will continue through February. It's important to also mention that Judy works with one district at a time. So, she is completely dedicated to Tuckahoe throughout this timeframe and I believe she will really serve us well and I thank the board for considering this approval.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, Carl, and some of the literature that we saw that you gave us about her, the thing that impressed me most was she seems very in tune with trying to look for ways to bring our education system to the 21st century. And she seems very much in tune with the needs of what needs to change in education to make us more, make our kids more competitive. So, that's something that really struck a nerve with me and I was really impressed to see that in her prior work. So, I'm excited to work with her.
If I could just add, I was on the board, I believe it was six, oh my gosh, it might already be seven years ago, when we actually passed the resolution to hire Charlie Wilson, Dr. Wilson, to do our needs assessment at the time. The value of this, I really can honestly say, I think it's the best money we can spend. It was the best money we spent then and I believe even more so now. And with so much happening here in, I think what Pete just said, in the change in the direction and what's happening in education today, and then the change is what's happening right here in our own district, with the changes in our facilities and the needs are changing. And I just think the timing couldn't be any more perfect. So, I'm very much looking forward to this and I really do encourage the community, when they have the opportunity to participate in the focus groups and in the discussions in this, in this part of the assessment, it is just so crucial that we have community involvement. And I know that Lauren will play a very big role in reaching out to the community and communicating to the community when these opportunities come about. But without the cooperation of the community, it's just not gonna be successful. So, for what we put into it is what we will get out of it. And I really do encourage everyone to really get involved in this process because it's really such an important piece of what we're gonna be doing moving forward in the future of this district. Anybody else? Okay. All in favor? Great. Okay. Moving on to personnel. Number one, accept a resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Adrian Nortaro as school nurse effective August 1st, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number two, accept the resignation, resolve to accept the resignation of Paul D'Onofrio as monitor effective August 21st, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Number three, accept the resignation, resolve to accept the resignation of Thomas Corbia as teacher, oh, I'm sorry. Resolve to accept the retirement of Tom... Oh, is it resignation?
That should be resignation.
Oh, that's what I thought also. Okay. Resignation of Thomas Corbia as teacher aide effective August 23rd, 2018. Motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number four, appointed music teacher. Resolve on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Charles Duchateau to a point eight-three-three temporary appointment as a teacher of music commencing September 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 on step A BA of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. Duchateau holds internship certification in music. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion?
I just, Carl, I just wanted to ask if this is continued strings or is he in addition? Is he gonna be doing more than just strings or it's just...
I believe this is the expansion. I don't have his exact schedule in front of me, Cynthia, but this, our strings program is thriving. Of course, you know, it started at Cottle and now it is through the middle school and even into our high school. So, I know we're adding some extra periods. So, for example, last year, he was at a point six. So, this is an increase year over year. Charles, just to mention, for those who do not know of Charles Duchateau, he is a high-level professional musician. He's conducting a show on Broadway right now, Carousel, in the evenings. He's working with our students during the day. And the program is thriving and we appreciate that. And Charles will, for the first time, actually have his own classroom. He's working out of the auditorium in the past, which is okay for large groups, but now we are creating a strings room for him and a thriving program. So, Cynthia, I think it is predominantly strings. There may be some extra music classes within this.
Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry. Carl, did we just say about his new classroom? Did we talk about that a little bit?
Lee mentioned it and...
Yes, now a good time to talk about it a little bit more.
Sure, sure, yes. We are creating out of what was previously a conference room, a storage room, and a business office. We took down some walls for minimal expense and are creating a small strings classroom. It'll comfortably accommodate, you know, 12 to 15 students. It is adjacent to the auditorium, which is the perfect location for it, away from academic classrooms, but right here in our music wing. So, we are very pleased that Charles will have a space of his own.
That's exciting.
And for his students.
Right. Okay. Okay. Number five, increase the teacher. Resolve to increase the teaching load of Colleen Joyce by point six-six, no, I'm sorry, point zero-six-six effective September 6th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion?
Carl, I was wondering if we're just five through nine? I mean, I kind of know the reason it may be why the teachers' caseloads are increasing.
This was budgeted for, this is for geometry labs. Geometry is one of our most challenging math courses, the new Common Core geometry, well, it's not so new anymore. So, this is some extra periods to support students in doing well in a rigorous regions course. Does that answer your question, Cynthia?
Yep.
Okay.
Number six, increase, oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote. Okay, but I will just add a comment also. Maybe we'll do the same thing, Lauren, in the future on the agenda. So, like, if this is increase a teacher, right, we will block them all together on one agenda item and then we'll have each one separately, but they'll all be one resolution. Okay. Like, you know, one resolution to accept what's ever attached there. Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor? Number six, increase the teacher. Resolve to increase the teaching load of Danielle Dwyer by point one effective September 6th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number seven, increase the teacher. Resolve to increase the teaching load of John DiArco by point zero-six-six effective September 6th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number eight, increase the teacher. Resolve to increase the teaching load of Antonetta DeAngelis by point two effective September 6th, 2018 through January 11th, 2019 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion?
No, Carl, I was just wondering, is any of this due to, because I know that some of the teachers are going on leave. So, are some of these teachers covering for them?
Yes. What we did here, this is the recommendation from our high school principal. Ms. Viro is on leave through January 11th. And this is to cover one of her Italian classes. It's very difficult, as I think the board knows, to find teachers with foreign language certification. This area of Italian was particularly challenging and it's only a half-year. So, the recommendation is to have Ms. DeAngelis, who's a veteran Italian teacher, pick up one, at least one of Ms. Viro's classes. And I do support this. I think it's a sound decision for our students.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Cynthia, go ahead.
No, because I know that there were, because there were a lot of teachers who had, you know, went out on leave. Are there other teachers who are covering, any others that will be out on leave or within this group?
No.
Because I just know some people in the community might be concerned. They just want to make sure that...
The other increases, you have some different subject areas, some special education. Yeah, this is the only one that is covering for a teacher out on leave, Cynthia.
All in favor? Number nine, increase the teacher. Resolve to increase the teaching load of Elise Fein by point one effective September 6th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number 10, appoint a special education teacher. Resolve on the recommendation of the Superintendent to appoint Jonathan Cooper to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of special education and biology in the special education and science tenure areas, commencing September 1st, 2018 and ending August 31st, 2022 contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout his probationary period, consistent with the requirements of education law sections 3012, 3012C, and/or 3012D on step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. Cooper holds students with disabilities 7 through 12 and biology 5 through 9 initial certifications. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number 11, appoint a point-four special education teacher. Resolve on the recommendation of the Superintendent to appoint Edward Ben Vega to a point-four temporary appointment as a teacher of special education commencing September 6th, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019 on step 1 BA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. Ben Vega holds permanent special education certification. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion? Can I just, I'm sorry, go back to the last appointment of the, is that teacher going to be teaching, is special ed certification, but will he be teaching science?
We have two sections of self-contained science for like the tenth graders, living environment, leading to that biology, living environment regents for the graduation requirement.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So, number 11, discussion there? All in favor? Number 12, appoint point-six speech teacher. Resolve on recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Lori Nizadi to a temporary appointment as a teacher of speech and language commencing September 4th, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019 on step 1 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Mr., Ms... Mister, Miss, Miss Nizadi holds initial speech and language disability certification. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Cynthia, discussion?
Can we, can we, when we have recommendations for, where we're picking up time or adding teachers, can we just, and what school they're in, what building? Whether it's lower school, lower, middle, upper?
Let me look in the backup. I think it says it, Rob, if you, if you open up the attachment.
Yeah.
It's a, like, this one, for example, is at the William E. Cottle School. Part-time position, meet IEP mandates. Oh, I'm sorry, you, you're on paper. My apologies. So in the electronics, so, yeah, i- it is there. Joseph did provide that.
And the increases, we have special ed, you know, a few different appointments. Is that because of the enrollment, because the children are matriculating up to different levels or?
Good question. So, it's usually enrollment-driven, but also enrollment could be stable, but a student's program changes sometimes. So, you have a combination of things at play, but, but it could very well, in some cases, be new students come in, there, there is a requirement that we have to fulfill, and you see this a lot in, in areas that, that are mandated. So for example, English language learners, there is a state requirement to provide certain levels of instruction in certain settings, with special education, with speech, with OT, with PT. What we do typically, you know, our, our approach is to, to budget very closely. So we're projecting, you know, back in March or April, what we think we will need in September. But of course, you know, new students come in, sometimes IEPs change, so that, that's what accounts for some of these minor adjustments. The schedules are in place at this point, but now we have to, of course, make sure everything is staffed.
Thank you.
Right, I will, because you mentioned in the attachments, is that true, then, the same thing with the increases, it'll say what they'll be doing, like, as to why it was increased?
Yes, in, in the attachments, um, you want to, if, if you give me, if you give me an example, like a number, I, I can-
No, that's, that's-
Yeah. What, what we have is each, each hiring administrator is, is going to provide, the board, behind the resolution, the backup, there'll be a cover letter, the first page, we, we, I, I give them a model of everything. They summarize the candidate's qualifications, but also specifically what they will be teaching and in what building and what the assignment is. So usually, you know, all you need to look at is the summary, but then behind that, there will be certifications, there will be resumes, but that first page should be able to answer most of your questions.
I, I think just because we're in a, in a public forum, we were on television, if someone's just tuning in to watch the meeting, I think if maybe we could just maybe add that in the language, so when it's read-
The building doesn't go in the resolution, because then if you have to, because then you're pigeonholing them to one space. If you, if you, the needs flash and the need to be in a different building, then-
Understood.
You're approving them only to work in that building.
Okay.
Well, and it also goes by their tenure area, Rob. It gets a little complicated. So for example, some people are tenured and they could work anywhere in the district. They may start at Cottle, but if there's a need at the middle school, and there are a number of people that go across buildings. Other tenure areas are building-specific, so that, that may be why you see some that are building-specific in the resolution, others that are not. That means, you know, that their tenure is probably across, you know, the entire district, K through 12.
Thank you.
All in favor? Number 13, appoint a part-time monitor. Resolve on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Louis Chivetta to a probationary appointment effective September 1st, 2018 through June 31st, 2019 as a part-time monitor at the William E. Cottle School on step 6 of the CSEA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? I just wanted to say that, and we've talked about it before, and we talked about it at length during the budget process, how much that this board supports the hiring of additional security monitors. Our preference is if we have a retired police officer, and in this case, we are very fortunate to have a retired police officer from the Eastchester Police Department. So I thank him for joining our staff and, and very pleased to add this addition. Again, this entire board, I mean, we may disagree on certain things, but as far as safety and security, we are all on the exact same page, that it is our number-one priority, and it is our responsibility to create a safe environment for our students. That is our number-one responsibility. So, I'm very pleased with the hire, and we are continuing to look for additional security monitors. We do have openings, and again, this board strongly supports the hiring of retired police officers. All in favor? Number 14, appoint mentors. Resolve to appoint the following teachers as mentors for the 2018-19 school year at a rate as per the TTA contract. Jean Hyson, Ann Richter, Rebecca Chiaffi, Kristen Vincenzi, Danielle Dwyer, Colleen Joyce, Kathy Mosher, Antonetta De Angelis, Marielle Ferguson, which is a point six position, and Karen Pollitt. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion?
Just important to mention that every new teacher in Tuckahoe is assigned a mentor. We, our mentors are all tenured teachers with, usually with many years of experience behind them. Dr. McDonald will oversee the mentoring program this year, and, and it's important for new teachers to have someone who they can go to and, and work with to, to get acclimated and, and settle into their new positions.
All in favor? Number 15, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a side letter of agreement dated August 21st, 2018, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association, and authorizes the Superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion?
I, I'll just speak to this. This is a side letter with our teachers' union. Last year, we did a very similar agreement, or I think it's identical, actually. The compensation is the same. And this basically establishes curriculum leaders, and this is for the Writing Revolution Program that we talked about earlier. We will, at the next meeting, be making recommendations for teachers who we would like to serve in these positions. With the contract open and negotiations currently happening, we would like to integrate this formally in, into the contract. So this is something we intend to do every year. It may change subject areas, but, but this, this is an important step in, in moving forward with curriculum and instruction, is to have teacher leadership. So that's, that's what this accomplishes.
That's great. All in favor? Okay, now we are at the second recognition of the audience. And I don't see any hands there, so that will be it for tonight. We are going to go back into executive session, so we're not going to adjourn the meeting. And again, to everyone to enjoy the last of summer, a few last very hot days, and we will see you all next week. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.